Is working. We don't get populated.
Right.
We don't go up to the public.
It's just kind of the world we're in. With what we got.
Long as, I mean, long as no one cares that I'm.
Yeah.
Alright, we.
Thank you.
Starting now?
Okay.
Yes. A call to all. Planning Commission needs. Equal 20. The, um, roll call. I've. Several times. These need to be kept. Being able to. One. Uh.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner. Commissioner Brown. And Commissioner Waidola.
Present.
Thank you very much. Um, we have a, uh, consent agenda, the minutes. Tent 2028 meeting. There. Can.
And then we approve consent.
Second.
Alright, it moved and seconded that we approved the consent agenda will have to take another verbal roll call. Um, I, uh. Commissioner Kai.
Yes.
Be consented. Uh, Commissioner Cottle.
Yeah.
Hello? And. Um. Has. Um. Going to take. Out to get this. Possible. Less than. During the hearing process?
Yes.
Thank you.
Like to speak, um, is put your name in the chat room? And depending on what type of device you have, the chat room is typically on the left-hand side and it says chat. You can just click on that. It doesn't change anything in regards to your screen, but you can type in your name or question, but typically type your name in so that we know we'll call on you.
And just a heads up, everybody that's in this meeting, um, can see the chat, so don't tell jokes or anything like that. It's, it's visible to everybody.
Yes, and definitely the chat i- is a formal record, so anything that is this or typed in there is part of the record also, is part of this meeting. Um, so that is one key component if you want to speak, um, especially during the deliberation, the chat room is going to be great so all of us aren't, uh, speaking over each other. Um, I've also, there's a whole series of applicants within this conversation as far as this part team. You can't see them, they're all in their shows right now. I've all asked them to mute their, um, uh, audio, but also to, um, not show their video until if the applicant is, uh, ready and at the appropriate time speak, uh, and do their presentation. And I too will be doing the staff presentation and I will be sharing my screen with you, um, so you should be able to see that. And, um, in addition to that, I emailed it to everyone for those of you that can't, aren't, uh, can't see the screen, you should have that in an email form to, in addition to all the other exhibits that I, I received later today. That is all that I have. Um, we currently do not have anyone in the audience, so, um, just as a heads up, I'm not expecting any public testimony. So, yeah.
If someone loses connection, is there an alternate phone number that you can provide for people to call in, um, to alert one of the staff members here so that we know they've dropped off? We had an issue, um, in years past where, uh, Commissioner had called in and they had dropped their line and we weren't aware of it. So, uh, we weren't able to stop the testimony from occurring and so we had a, had to do a reboot. So if we drop some, drop a Commissioner, we need to pause our presentation, whether it's the staff report or the applicant testimony to allow the Commissioner to rejoin, so.
Okay, um, so typically you would just rejoin by calling in the number that was part of the, um, the team's, uh, meeting request. It's, um, it's, uh, the number with a passcode, so you can directly, um, go through that. And if you have any issues, I have my cellphone here, uh, you can call me the number at 971-979-5369. Again, 971-979-5369. So that's myself, um, I'll get the notice, but ideally if you can, um, just go back to the team's, uh, meeting request and there's a number with a passcode that you can just chime in and you can join us, um, through the phone.
So, Joy, that may be, I, I know Alex is trying to get in and is using that number and is struggling, so I'm not sure. I think Erica and Brad are working on that, so I think calling, um, first if you lose connection, try to get back through, you know, see, see, you know, if it's, it's probably an internet type of thing, try to get back on through, um, your browser. And then if that's not possible, you can certainly try that number that was part of the team's invite, and then if you're still having problems, contact Joy. I think that's a good strategy, but hopefully. That won't happen.
Yes, and another, um, you know, all of us have different bandwidth and, uh, and capability in regards to, uh, obtaining the data. Uh, if you want to save on the bandwidth and you just want to hear, you can just, uh, turn off your video components. That will definitely help in regards to at least hearing, um, what's being presented and seeing other people, but you will not be televised.
Okay. And is it possible to get Commissioner Brown on via phone?
So Commissioner Brown is trying to call and she can't get in.
Okay, so there was, she has the phone number, right?
Right.
And there's the access code.
It, it's saying she's in the waiting room, waiting to be admitted, but she's not getting admitted, but we don't see her in the waiting room. That's my understanding.
I'm, okay, let me see. I'm. Yeah, I don't see her in the waiting room at all.
She might want to call back and make sure that she's using the right, maybe she, um.
Yeah, I, because.
Maybe she has something else that's not.
Yeah, just, can she just re-verify just to make sure that the.
That she e- yeah, she emailed and the number that she has is the number that is part of the team, so, um.
So I, yeah, I don't know.
They're just a dial phone number she can use and.
That's what she's trying to do, call, oh.
She's trying to. But is there like a conference call that we can just have her conference call in?
We don't, we use my, uh.
Oh.
Um, I can have her call my cell phone.
Well, who is, who is, who is.
Yes, Lori, it's, uh, Alex, and I already sent her, um, an invite again, but maybe option.
We would, we would see her phone number in here.
Right, and saying that it is waiting.
Maybe have her disconnect and try to reconnect. No, she should probably do a.
No.
Multiple. Hopefully we should be able to dial in at the same time. Maybe have her disconnect and try to redial in and see if we see her.
Okay, I'm gonna say it, try again.
I, I think she's already tried it at least a couple times, but let's see if we can get her to try it one more time.
Give it one more try before we move on to.
Right, because we do have a quorum.
Yes, we have a quorum and so we can just move on if we get one more fit. If she has, um, a concern, maybe we can ask Erica.
She can relay it to me and I will relay it back.
Yeah, because if she has testimon- not testimony, but if she has Commissioner.
I'm on hold now and I did the name recording.
Are you not seeing her?
I'm not seeing her at all.
I think she's.
It says that we can invite someone or dial a number, should, may, can we get her cellphone number and then call her through this team's?
Sure, um, what's her?
Hold on one second, her phone number.
Let's not announce it to everybody if we're filming on YouTube. Just a suggestion.
Now I have to walk out.
Alright, we're almost there.
Oh, oh, somebody else is in the lobby, I'm gonna let them in. It's not her.
She, she, okay.
It's right there.
Hey, Justin, I could hear you type that, so no.
Okay, I can, alright. Can you hear anyone else, Rick?
No, just you and I so far.
Okay.
I, I, I think they muted.
Yeah, I'm, I can hear. I think, I think they were just muted.
Okay.
But Jo, I, so I do have the YouTube thing up just to see, and Jo made a comment in the YouTube chat that who set up the meeting, that is who needs to let her in.
But she's not showing up, but.
Yeah, so.
Um. I, I kind of think that it's 7:20 and maybe we should start and try to, I mean, I think if Erica can maybe work on getting her joined or something, but. I'm just a little worried that we're gonna be here till midnight trying to get everybody in that wants to get in.
Yes, please. I have a small window of peace without my children bursting through my office door, which is probably why Justin is at City Hall right now.
Yes. Yup. Because kids don't understand not to come.
Right. I have a 15-year-old and she still doesn't understand that.
I'm about ready to lock my office door just so they don't burst through.
So, Joy, I'm not sure you're muted, but maybe. If you want to go ahead and start.
It looks like she is, but I can't. Hear her.
Yeah, I can't hear her. She's muted. I can tell that she's muted. Oh, well, because we know she's muted, but, um. Erica, Jean, Joy, we can't hear or see any of you.
And if I'm looking at the YouTube stream properly.
There's Jean. I see Jean, but. We cannot hear you. Jean, we cannot hear you. I don't know if you're talking.
Maybe she's just moving her lips and.
Maybe.
Joy, um, yeah, Joy said a whole bunch of stuff that we didn't hear.
So. Jean, you're moving, you're saying, we can't hear you. It looks like she's reading the script.
Can someone through the YouTube loop, uh, the link into the chat box?
Yeah. We may have to mute ourselves on Microsoft Teams and just listen on YouTube.
Well, we, we, I, I think I'd like to get IT to find a solution because this.
No, I. We're rebooting the phone.
You can hear you now.
Can everybody on the conference hear us?
Unknown participant is now joining.
Yes, I can hear you.
I think, I think there was a team's conferencing issue that the phone stopped working, so.
Okay, so I, should we do announcements again?
So where. What did you guys hear?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Alright, so let's, um, let's do planning, um, announcements, staff announcements.
Okay, so we're going back to staff announcements. Can everybody hear Joy well?
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
I can hear.
Thank you so much for confirming that. Okay. So, um, the updates that I have, the next planning commission meeting is on May 26th. One public hearing is scheduled for the Sherwood Corporate Park is on southwest corner of Twelton Sherwood Road and 124th Avenue. And it encompasses five industrial buildings. Um, the technical and community advisory committees for the comprehensive plan update met this past week and reviewed draft goals and policies for the third block of the plan, which is strategic collaborative governance. The survey for the block is up on the sherwood2040.org website until May 6th. We actually closed and reopened it so that we can get more community, uh, input, so please, um, do the survey if you can. The next block of the comp plan is attractive and attainable housing, which will be kicking off in mid-June. The Brookman Refinement Virtual Open House is open on the city's webpage. Planning staff sent about 200 postcards to property owners within and around the corridor. That included information about the project and how to view the online open house materials. Residents can comment on the project online, uh, and materials are up until May 4th of this year.
Thank you very much, and so, um, we do not have any community members here to make comments, so before we start the new business hearing, I'm gonna take another quick roll call to ensure we still have a quorum present and, um, available to hear everything. Commissioner Kai?
Here.
Commissioner Cottle?
Still here.
Commissioner Holm?
Here.
Commissioner Waidola?
Here.
Okay, so. And I'm obviously here, so we have five people, so we're selling forums. So this, the public hearing on SB 19-02 Reserve at Cedar Creek subdivision is called to order. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff will present the staff report, questions if any by the hearing body for staff. We will then open the public hearing for testimony and the time will be limited as follows. Applicant 30 minutes, split between presentation and rebuttal. Persons in favor of the application, four minutes each. Person opposed to the application, four minutes each. Rebuttal from the applicant is the remainder of the 30 minutes, and we will try and give some sort of indication when, um, half the time's been used and when there's five minutes remaining. We will then close the public hearing and no other comments will be heard from the public or the applicant. There'll be final comments by staff, questions of staff if any by the commission, and then deliberation and discussion by the commission. A decision may be made by the planning commission at the close of the hearing or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice of that date you receive. If you wish to speak, please fill out one of the blue testimony forms and submit it to the planning commission secretary. The chair will recognize people who wish to speak and questions should be addressed through the chair. When coming forward, please state your name and address for the record. In reaching a decision on the application, the commission must consider whether the application meets the relevant approval criteria in the city's land use regulations. Those criteria identified in the staff report. There are two copies of the staff report available in the room this evening. The testimony and evidence must address these criteria or other criteria you believe to apply to the decision. Please note failure to raise an issue with enough detail to enable the commission, the applicant, and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues, preclude an appeal to the city council or land use board of appeals on that issue. Also, failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval, again with enough detail to allow the commission to respond to the issues, preclude an action for damages in circuit court. This evening, the planning commission is the, uh, final hearing authority and any appeal would be to the city council. At this time, we'll take a roll call to confirm members of the commission to disclose any expert contact bias or conflicts of interest. When your names called indicate any nature, indicate the nature and extent of the expert contact bias or conflict of interest. And indicate whether you anticipate, intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing, or indicate none. Commissioner Kai?
None.
Commissioner Cottle?
None.
Commissioner Holm?
None.
Commissioner Waidola?
None.
And for myself, I have no expert contact bias or conflict of interest. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any planning commission members' ability to participate? And this would also include the applicant if they choose to, um. Make any. Dispute. Hearing done, um, planning staff will now present the staff report.
Alright, I will actually share my screen, so let me bear with me for a second. Great, so let's just, um, well, good evening, Joy Chang, Senior Planner, uh, from the Planning Department. And in front of you tonight is the Reserve at Cedar Creek subdivision, case file SUB 19-02. Uh, the properties are reflected in red and are addressed at 17045 and 17117 Southwest Brookman Road. Uh, the site is generally located in the southwestern portion of the city. Um, Southwest Cobble Court along with the associated, uh, developments are to the north and Southwest Brookman Road to the south. West of the site is the preliminary approved Middlebrook subdivision and to the east is existed, existing developed parcel. The properties are outlined in blue on this slide. They are zone medium density residential low with density, uh, requirements of 5.6 to 8 units per net buildable acre. The proposed plan density of this development is approximately 7.09 units per net buildable acre, meeting both the minimum and maximum density standard for the zoning district. The overall proposal for Cedar Creek subdivision or the reserves of Cedar Creek. The site is approximately 15.76 acres, um, there's a total of 59 lots. As you can see from this image, Cedar Creek bisects a nor, uh, the site from a northern segment to a southern segment. The northern segment consists of 44 lots, lots 1 through 44, um, along with the water quality track, which is track B, a private street, um, uh, identified as track A. Uh, pedestrian and bicycle path connection between, um, the two streets for connectivity. And access will be obtained from roadways created from the Middlebrook subdivision. The southern segment consists of 15 lots, lots 45 to 59, with a water quality track D. Visual corridors, the applicant chose to put the visual corridors also in tracks, so those are tracks D and F along Southwest Brookman Road. Uh, private street, um, track G and, uh, direct access from Brooklyn Road, um, from the, a local street called Southwest Robin Hood Place. Uh, so as I said previously, uh, the site is bisected by Cedar Creek. And so the applicant is proposing this as track C. And you can see from this image, a connector trail from the northern and the southern segments, uh, is proposed, um, along with a community trail, so that will ultimately extend to, um. Adjacent development and, um, having this track C will also preserve overall the Cedar Creek, um, let lines. And vegetative corridors. So, this site is part of, of course, part of the Brookman Edition Concept Plan, which was ba- adopted, um, by the city of Sherwood Council back in 2009. The concept plan provides established framework for future land use planning in the area. Um, the project site is outlined in blue and is consistent with the Brookman Edition Concept Plan with local street connections and preservation of natural areas. Um, back in 2017, the property owners and applicant requested, um, or property owners requested annexation to the city of, uh, city of Sherwood boundary under the provision of seven, uh, Senate Bill 1573. The approval criteria are listed on this slide and they are here for your reference. So, um, the next couple of slides will highlight some of the key components of the proposal, um, so you should be aware of. So the applicant is utilizing provisions under 16.144, um, lot size reduction. Um, that requires equal amount of inventoried resource above and beyond that is already required to be protected and is held in public or private open space tract. Or otherwise protected from, uh, further development. As proposed, um, the applicant indicated that 256,841 square feet of open space area is proposed to be designated for inclusion and protection within this tract C. This equates to 30, uh, 30,755 square feet of open space, not otherwise required by the code. And far exceeds the minimum 8,809 square feet required by the provision. So, uh, through track C, lot size reduction requirements are satisfied, and as you can see, um, some of the lots, um, 10% reduction comes to be 4,500 square feet. The applicant also, um, shows, or shows, um, lots that. The applicant also shows, or shows lots that are less than the minimum frontage lot width requirement of twenty-five feet. And so one of the requirements as far as condition of approval, the applicant will need to modify these pieces of, or these lots to meet that minimum twenty-five feet. Like lot forty-nine is a flag lot, but it only has a twenty-foot frontage, so that needs to be modified. And then like lot fifty-three, which is, that gained access of tract G, I believe that's only, it's definitely less than twenty-five feet. So, but again, that requirement is conditioned, so that will be satisfied as far as that requirement. The environmental components, the applicant did submit a site assessment prepared by environmental science and assessment. The site contains inventoried regional significant fish and wildlife habitat associated with the Cedar Creek drainage and associated floodplain and wetland area. As you can see, there is an area to the northwest corner that will be mitigated. That is an existing wetland, but it will be developed with lots. CWS, Clean Water Services, provided an amended SPL that included environmental reviews and conditions tied to mitigation, protection of sensitive areas and vegetative corridor. So SPL being service provider letter. The proposal also received a wetland delineation determination concurrence letter issued by the State of Oregon Department of State Land. And as required, staff was required to submit a wetland land use notice to DSL. And they provided a response that basically said that the proposal, the proposed activity will impact wetlands and require a state permit. And second, that a federal permit may be required by U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So there are specific conditions tied to those that are also within the staff report. So infrastructure, specifically sewer and water. So the connection for public sanitary sewer service means to the public sanitary sewer trunk line, part of the larger regional Brookman sanitary sewer trunk extension project. This smaller portion of the region trunk line is being constructed as part of Middlebrook Estate subdivision, ending at a point which provides access to the proposed Reserve at Cedar Creek subdivision project. Again, the extension of the public water system previously constructed by them, Middlebrook subdivision. That's how water will also be obtained. As far as transportation needs, Oregon Department of Transportation basically indicated that they are willing to accept a fee in lieu of their proportionate share cost for addition of a signalized intersection improvement on Pacific Highway and Chapman and Brookman Road intersection. And for Washington County, also a fee in lieu for construction that we will collect 125% of the estimated deferred frontage improvement, construction cost. That includes all of those items on that screen. Furthermore, Southwest Brookman Road is a county right-of-way. So the applicant was required to obtain a county design exception because they are, Robin Hood Place is a local street access, which a local street access can't access directly to an arterial roadway in this case. And so that design, county design exception has been granted and is part of the application packet. A county facility permit is also, will be required to construct public street connections to Brookman Road, constructing the minimum pavement width of twenty-two feet, adequate site distance, intersection improvements, and closing all existing access to the, to the, to the site from Brookman. And they will be also required to provide a preliminary certification of adequate site distance. We are asking at this time right-of-way dedication of fifty-three feet from center line. And again, the ultimate frontage improvement, we're going to take fee in lieu of construction. In regards to City of Sherwood transportation, the applicant, through the variance process, did ask for a cul-de-sac length through the land use process for Robin Hood Place because it exceeds over 200 feet, which is our maximum standard. But at the same time, which is great, and they did address that in the narrative, but there is a separate process for an engineering design modification that they will need to submit. And there is a condition of approval that says that they'll need to do that prior to moving on to the next phase of the development. And Bob, our city engineer, has reviewed, you know, the narrative and doesn't see, have any concerns in being able to approve that in the future. But again, they still need to submit that formally. There is also off-site improvements and the applicant will be required to do proportional share cost of improvements at four intersections. And what we did do is I emailed all these out as exhibit B2 and B3. B2 and B3 basically have brand, not brand new, but amended amount based on the track, the revised or the most recent traffic, traffic impact analysis. So the amounts at, for these four intersections are correct and as amended for those two exhibits. So the four intersections are Sunset Boulevard and Woodhaven Drive, Sunset Boulevard and Trimble Lane, oh, Southwest Lad Hill Road and Southwest Main Street, I forgot to put a bullet there, and Southwest Baker Road, Murdoch Road, and Sunset Boulevard intersection. So those are the four intersections that we're going to take a fee in lieu for those improvements. As reflected on this, the off-site, again, the green, let's see here. The, the green is Southwest Woodhaven Drive and Sunset Boulevard. The yellow, Trimble Lane and Sunset Boulevard. Orange is Lad Hill Road and Main Street. And the blue star is Baker Road and Southwest Murdoch. The red star, which I thought I addressed, ODOT is requiring, oh yeah, ODOT is requiring some signalized proportional share for the signal on Highway 99 and Chapman and Brookman intersection. As far as future development plan, this is just a visual of how the entire area could possibly be developed with the site highlighted in yellow on this slide. And to the west or to the left of it is currently the approved Middlebrook subdivision. And ultimately, and to the right, what we are, the proposal consists of a three-quarter of a street that ultimately the parcel adjacent to the east could develop in the future. One of the key requirements that, or one of the conditions of approval that is required as part of this is that the access point for that particular northwestern, no, northeastern parcel is currently being shared by this development. So as a condition of approval, they will have to, this development will have to provide access so that that parcel can gain access to roadways in the future. So that is a condition of approval. Agency comments were sent out back in January 21st and all are incorporated within the staff report. Public notice was mailed to property owners within a thousand feet. We also renoticed, based on the new, new public hearing requirements due to COVID-19, we posted again this notice in five different locations throughout the city and published it originally in the Tiger Times, which is a newspaper of general circulation. It says we didn't receive public comments, but just before five o'clock tonight, we actually did receive public comments, which is exhibit K for the general public. And basically, it is, so we see one comment in favor of the proposal. The letter was received from the whole group, the developer of Middlebrook subdivision to the west of the site. The testimony, again, we labeled it as exhibit K as part of the record. The whole group, I'll summarize it for you now. So the whole group are in support of development. However, through their subdivision process, significant sewer and water infrastructures were required to develop their site and new development, likes of reserves at Cedar Creek, benefits from the extension of these services that were financed by them. They would like new development adjacent and nearby properties to be included within the reimbursement district. And the applicant and property owners of the reserve at Cedar Creek subdivision should be allowed to, to not contest the formation of the public improvement reimbursement district to avoid paying their fair and proportionate share for these necessary public water and sanitary sewer infrastructure improvements that benefit their project. Staff supports the creation of the reimbursement district and also supports the proposal as being part of the reimbursement district. However, the reimbursement district creation and process is outside of the land use process. And conditions of approval tied to this request can't be made at this time. That is all the public testimony I received. I've had several inquiries, but nothing formal submitted except for the email that was received earlier tonight from the whole group. Based on the review of the applicant's submittal and zoning code, agency comments and findings of fact in the staff report, staff recommends approval of the reserves at Cedar Creek subdivision subdirect condition of approval in the staff report and as amended in exhibit three, B3. That concludes my staff report and I can answer any questions if may have.
Joy, before you do, Mark Cottle was not able to see the presentation for some reason. So he was going to view it on YouTube. So I just want to make sure that he's able to comment here. So if you can ask him for a mic check, that would be great.
He's actually asked a question already, so I was going to call on Commissioner Cottle for his, Commissioner Cottle's question. Is there a condition that until the roads for Middlebrook subdivision are in, this cannot start? So.
Yes, that is correct. Basically, until this is, there is a specific condition that the improvement for Middlebrook subdivision need to be done. But Bob Galati is here and can speak to that.
The condition that we have.
Did I just lose everyone?
No, I'm here.
No, you just, the presentation went away. I'm sorry.
Okay. Explanation of what we did is because the. We're waiting.
So it's just the screen that's not being shared, so we still are seeing and hearing, we're just not seeing your presentation.
Okay. Was it, was it everybody? Couldn't see my screen?
Yeah.
It was just Mark. Okay, go ahead, Bob. No.
I'm trying to get my thoughts back together here about the condition, the way we wrote it. The access to the upper portion, which is the northern portion of the proposed project site, would go through the adjacent project. That and connect into a lot of the facilities. Basically, deficit amass because they, those, the project, the improvements done in the Middlebrook subdivision would not be public improvements. In other words, they have not been constructed, inspected, and accepted by the city, which would turn basically the streets and the water system and the sanitary system into public facilities owned by the city, which would make them accessible for any public use. So to continue the, the construction of, to allow the construction, at least of the northern portion and any portion related to public utilities or, or utilities that would connect in to an unaccepted system, basically creates a problem of what if damage occurs? Who's responsible? Under this condition that we've, you know, made, if they want to do construction on that portion, if they can find a way of crossing the stream corridor and not damage anything, they can construct it. But they are not going to be able to connect in until that other project is completed and accepted. Then they can fill in the standoff distance, which is like ten feet. In other words, there won't be any public roads, there won't be any utility connection within ten feet of the, the property limit for the Middlebrook subdivision.
So for clarification, that G8 that says, that describes this, but it specifies public water systems, and I think the question was.
That, that condition goes for roadway, water, sewer.
Okay.
Everything.
Maybe just double check the language in G8 because I'm not reading it that same way, so. While he looks up that, is there any other questions the commission has before we have the applicant provide their presentation? Because when I read it, it says, until that time, a minimum ten-foot physical separation between both, the proposed site development, public water system, and the Middlebrook subdivision public water system shall be maintained. And it doesn't specifically address the roads.
Well, am I, am I right of my condition, that condition is that all three of the facilities, it's in the, it's in for the roadway system, for the water system, and the sanitary system? So maybe it didn't get popular.
There is a condition, G2, connection to the northern development for the public transportation improvement.
G2, G4, okay.
So it's, it's broken up to the type of transportation, the sanitary sewer, and then water.
Okay, so G2, G4, G8.
I wanted to make sure each one of them was spelled out individually, that way I didn't.
Okay, perfect. So roads are then.
The idea is anything that would be classified as a public improvement should not be connected into, until Middlebrook is completed and accepted, then they can make their connection.
All right, perfect. That answers, that answers the question. Thank you. And a thank you for Mark. All right. Any other questions from the commission before we have the applicant provide their testimony? All right, then we're going to call on the applicant. And if you could say your name and address for the record as you begin to testify, that will help us out greatly.
Thank you. Just to confirm, Joy, you have my presentation?
Yes, I do. So after you present yourself as far as your name and address, I'll bring up the presentation now.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners and staff. My name is Wayne Hason with Pioneer Design Group, representing the applicant, David Polley Holmes. My address is 9020 Southwest Washington Square Road, Suite 170, Brooklyn, Oregon 97229.
Okay, great. Give me a second, and let me share, and then you can just also instruct me as far as moving it forward.
All right, thank you.
All right, Joy.
I can keep going with introductions while you get that up, Joy, if that's, okay?
Yes, please.
Okay, so thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. We do appreciate the efforts and the efforts of staff to put this thing together and to keep the land use process moving. But given the circumstances, I'm going to try to be brief tonight and not repeat too many of the details that staff have gone over. I don't think we, we need to hear them twice, and staff did a really good job covering main points. With that said, I would like to begin, just because it's a slightly different scenario tonight, I'd like to just let you know that on my left here, and with me is Matt Sprague of Pioneer Design Group. We also have online tonight Brent Fitch, Principal Engineer at Pioneer Design Group. We have Jack Dalton, our Project Biologist, and we also have Chris Bremer, our Transportation Engineer for the project. They are all ready to answer questions about the application if needed, so please feel free to make use of their expertise if you have any questions. Next slide. Just a quick overview, as staff mentioned, the basics of the application are a 59-foot single-family residential subdivision in the median density residential low zone. Within the application, we have also requested a modification to the cul-de-sac length standards and a 10% reduction in minimum lot area of the street. As staff did through that great background and the approval criteria with you, I just want to highlight some of what we consider to be the main features of the application. They include that we believe there's a variety of single-family detached lots, with lots ranging, and I noticed that it's not only there, but 4,500 square feet, up to the largest lot, it's just over 10,000 square feet, so we think that there is a good variety of lots. We're providing over 256,000 square feet, which is almost six acres of Cedar Creek and associated bitlands, the Ryparian Corridors and floodplain, which will be preserved as open space. And that includes the 30,000 square feet Joy was talking about, which minus the 8,000 that we're providing for the adjustment to minimum lot sizes, means that there is approximately 22,000 square feet of open space provided in this development that is not otherwise applied anywhere else in the code. Within that, we have approximately 2,150 feet of off-street community trails and pathways, utilizing the existing crossing of Cedar Creek with continuous off-street connections with the northern and southern portions of the site. We also have direct connection on the east side, sorry, on the south side to Southwest Brookman Road and the proposed Cedar Creek subdivision. We will be extending the street connections of Atolati Lane and Kalafuya Lane from the approved Middlebrook subdivision to the west, with future connectivities available to the undeveloped property to the east, as Joy has pointed out. We will also be providing, as was stated, the payment of the fee in lieu for the copper needs improvements to Brookman Road. We're paying the fee in lieu because it's not possible to build those substantial improvements at this point, it really needs to be done for copper needs of road improvement projects, so we look forward to that happening in the future. We are also paying our proportional share of funds for the intersection improvements at the five intersections that were labeled with stars on the, on the slide that staff showed. Slide, please, Joy. As, as shown on the plaque, the site is divided into a north and south phase. On the north side, we have the four lots connecting to the approved Middlebrook subdivision and the three-quarter street improvement connecting to the property to the east to allow for that future development. To the south of the 15 lots, which access Brookman Road and Cedar Creek, shovels dividing the site, but we have, as we pointed out, utilized that existing driveway crossing to provide a connection between the two portions of the site. The, the bifurcation of the site with Cedar Creek drives the need for the access to Southwest Brookman Road, and access, access restrictions on Brookman Road mean that we can only have that single access, which leads to the creation of the extended cul-de-sac for an above-that 200-foot requirement. As staff mentioned, Washington County have approved a design exception to their access spacing standards to allow for this access, and we're aware of the condition requiring us to obtain a design exception from the city engineer, and we are preparing to submit that design exception. Slide, please, Joy. So looking at the architectural rendering of the site, you can see the significant tract of resource area which separates the phases. You can also note that the off-street trail system shows up very well on the rendering, with trails on both sides of Cedar Creek, which we feel is a really good opportunity to provide circulation through the site and also access to the resource and really enhancing the value of that resource in public. On the east side, potential connections are provided to adjoining undeveloped lands, and on the west, that connection is provided on the north side of Cedar Creek to the proposed trail within the Riverside at Cedar Creek Development, which has recently been submitted to the city, and on the southern side of Cedar Creek, that connection is made directly to Southwest Brookman Road. This provides significant connectivity within and through the development, particularly when you consider the accessway between the two streets, the northern portion of the property, the sidewalks that'll be constructed along Brookman Road eventually, and action of sidewalks to the Middlebrook subdivision, as well as all of those off-street trails. The other thing the rendering does do is it provides perspective on the cul-de-sac lane. As you can see, the main stem of the cul-de-sac is essentially two lots, two lots long, so we are extending that beyond the 200 feet, but as you can see on this, on this rendering, it's not a particularly long cul-de-sac, even though we are extending that distance, it remains under 300 feet from Brookman Road to the very end of the cul-de-sac hole, which also connects directly to that pedestrian trail system and the off-street trails. So, in summary, I just wanted to say again how much we appreciate the efforts of staff through this process, and with the current difficulty base especially, we accept the conditions of approval as revised, and would request that the planning committee move to approve the application tonight. With that, we are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. If we have any commissioners that would like to ask questions, if you go ahead and make any note in the chat, and I, as we get started, people have an opportunity to type any, type their name if they want to be called on to ask a question. I want to thank the applicant for their patience in putting up with our first-time technical difficulties, and it's very much appreciated. So, I've received one comment that Commissioner Cottle is not have questions. Any other commissioners have any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Waidola has also responded, and Commissioner Holm has responded. No questions. Commissioner Kai has a question.
I have a question for staff. Should I ask that now? Now, Gene?
Oh, it's a staff question, not an applicant. Okay.
Yeah.
I think it's fair to ask the staff, because that way the applicant can hear it, because we're not under deliberation, so go ahead and ask the question.
Okay. So, the, the question just pertains to the, the less than 5,000-square-foot lot size? I, I just wanted to try to better understand that, and it, that pertains to the amount of open space that is, is being allowed, correct? Or what, what mechanism is allowing for, for that less than 5,000-square-foot lot size in, in some of the lots?
So, it is a provision in the code under Section 161144 that allows for a 10% reduction. If, if the applicant goes above and beyond, that's necessary as far as the preservation. And, and the applicant has gone above and beyond in preserving more than necessary.
From a layman's perspective, the way I'd say it is in order to preserve more wetlands, they can reduce their lot size, and that's the...
Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and that, yeah, that makes total sense to me. It seems like a very more-than-beneficial trade-off. In that sense, just wanted to understand the parameters around it better, so...
I don't think I have any questions for the, oh, the applicant would like to respond also to that question. So, go ahead. I'm not sure who's responding, if that's Matt or...
It's Wayne Hason. So, I would just point out that within the code and within the different requirements that we have, we have provided approximately 230,000 square feet of open space, so that's what we're required by the code if we're not doing anything else to, to provide. Now, for that, for that 10% reduction to get down to 4,500 square feet, the code requires that we provide a certain percentage of the site as additional open space over and above that, which we've been required to provide, and so that number, and I can't remember the percentage, I'm sorry, but that number came out to be around approximately 8,000 square feet. So, we've provided an additional 30,000 square feet, including that 8,000, so I guess a net total over and above everything that we're required to provide, 22,000 square feet. So, we've actually provided, what, three, three times the amount that we're required to provide in order to qualify for that reduction in lot sizes. And a lot of that has gone into being able to create those additional trail areas outside of the resource to provide connectivity on both sides of Cedar Creek. So, I just wanted to give some clarification on that, and we, I believe the average lot size remains above 5,000 square feet, it's just some of those lots that get produced individually down below, down below 5,000, sorry, to 4,500 square feet.
And thank you for that, that explanation and that detail. You know, I know Sherwood is, is generally protective of, of keeping that 5,000-square-foot minimum lot size, but I think in terms of what you're able to exchange it for, and, and more importantly, the precedent that you're setting in this instance, I think is, is what I was more concerned with, and, and I think it's a very good example that, that you, you, you have been able to, to achieve, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. I don't see any other questions for the applicant. I, I think my questions are more detailed to the staff at this time, and we don't have, yeah, see, but no one else has entered the room, so there are no other citizens' comments or anybody to testify this evening, so if the applicant, I don't, Erica, how much time is left?
Yeah, 15 minutes.
So, the applicant still has time, a rebuttal didn't happen, so I don't know if the applicant really wants to make any further comments. If not, I would close the public hearing. So, I don't see any comments coming from the applicant, so we're going to go ahead and close.
Actually, Gene, sorry, I, I would, I would just like to know, would the applicant like to address the comments that Middlebrook subdivision, or, or are they able to address that here, Joy?
The Exhibit K is, her comment was that it's outside the land use process.
Okay, so it's, sorry, Joy, go ahead.
Yes, it is definitely outside of the land use process, but if the applicant wants to address it, then more than free and welcome to.
Sorry, Wayne Hason again here. I don't, we don't really have any rebuttal, we don't have any comments that I think are in some regard regarding the reimbursement district. I think that will sell through as we apply for site department payments with the different jurisdictions, cleanwater services, city, for example, as part of the engineering records.
All right. Seeing nods from the staff that the other commissioners can't see, both Bob, City Engineer Bob Galati, and Joy Chang are nodding in agreement with the applicant's comments. All right, if hearing no other questions and seeing no other chat requests, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing part of this. We will not have an opportunity for the applicant to make any more comments, but the commissioners are now in deliberation. Does anybody have any process questions or concerns that they want staff to answer at this time?
I, I have a question regarding the, the issue of Middlebrook, in that Middlebrook needing to be finished before this, this could, could start, is that correct?
Essentially, yes. The public improvements related to Middlebrook, public improvements related to Middlebrook, so, street, sanitary, water, stormwater improvements have to be constructed, inspected, accepted by the city, and then they become city infrastructure, makes it public for you, for the next person to connect into and continue on. Up until that point, it's basically owned by Middlebrook, and connection into it, if there's anything that goes wrong with it, roads, access through their property, anything along that line, becomes a real problem that we just don't want to go through.
But it would not preclude the applicant from doing their own grading and onsite improvements, it's that they can't connect to that last 10 feet. So, if they chose to get their grading, saying they can't do grading or other public...
Well, it's, it's not that they can't do their public improvements onsite, that, as much as they can. We're not precluding that.
Okay.
It's just that knowing access for the northern portion, the access to the Middlebrook is basically the only access through that, for that much truck traffic, for that much type of things. I would say that these, the cul-de-sac is a viable option, but again, they can't connect up to anything, roadway, the waterline, they'd have to extend it and everything like that, so, yeah, they could do some.
Thinking...
It's not, it's not precluding them from doing it, it's precluding them from getting ahead of the thing where they, oh, our development is smaller, we get done before Middlebrook, we want, we want acceptance, we want to have it ready to go, but I can't do that because it's out of sequence.
Right.
And it will be, because Middlebrook, three times the size of it.
So then, do we, is there, is there any issue with that as far as Middlebrook, as far as delay, or whether they're on schedule, or is that something that we can speak about during the meeting, or?
No, that is not part of the, the deal that we will control, Middlebrook. They start construction, they, they go until they decide that they're finished, and, and we, we accept the public improvement. After that, the reserve can connect in and make their final connection and complete their improvement, and get them accepted, in that order.
And I would add that the, the applicant very much knows this, is, is the issue, and that is... And I would add that the applicant very much knows this is the issue, and that is maybe a risk that they are taking that Middlebrook may take more time. But, you know, like Bob said, there are some things that they can do onsite, and, you know, they are, to a certain extent, relying on Middlebrook to get complete so they can get complete, but they know that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So logistics on track C, that it's going to be owned by the city, but the trail's going to be maintained by the homeowners association, is that unique or is that how these...
That's standard for us.
That's standard operating procedure? Okay. I just, I hadn't...
Unless it's a regional trail, interconnected ones, the local trail site stuff, HOA's take care of, and that's our standard.
And because they asked for a variance on the size, that's the only variance that's allowed or approved through this application? There's not going to be height variances or anything else in the subdivision unless they come back through a hearing process, correct?
Right.
Okay. And then, I guess, I don't know if I would call it out, or the track A and G have no parking, but it's really not called out as a condition. It's included as a net number in the Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue letter, that you have to approve the letter, so...
It's private street?
It's a private street, but really...
Not even a private street. It's private.
Driveway.
It's a shared driveway.
A shared driveway.
Too large for the shared driveway.
I know, because of the subdivision, we don't, we only have... You have a parking enforcement where one, prior to them coming in for site plan, they have to demonstrate one off-street parking spot per resident, but I have concerns about the parking and making sure that we are clear that A and G aren't going to be parked on.
Right. I'm just verifying Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue, their comments to us, just to make sure that...
It's on page 115. Oh, page 115, number seven, it's on no parking signs along track A and track B on both sides.
Yes. So the specific requirements for Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue are conditioned, and so we will make sure that that does get enforced. Oh, Lori has a question.
Okay. Commissioner Holm has a question.
So I just... So condition A4 talks about the approval is valid for a period of two years. Does staff feel that that is sufficient amount of time, or is there a chance that that time may expire because of the requirement to have Middlebrook completed for that?
So the code requires, allows for a period of two years is what the standard is.
Okay.
But I believe there's an opportunity for an extension, one additional extension to one year that they can file for if they're coming to a point where they can, you know, getting close to the two-year requirement.
Okay. So there is opportunity to ask for an extension?
For one additional year, correct.
Okay, okay.
Boy, you're really quiet on this end, just FYI. And then I'll also add that in addition to the possible one-year extension, the deadline or the timeline to be complete is really to kind of get through the plat process, so it doesn't mean that everything has to be fully constructed. It just basically, it means you can't sit on it for two years and do nothing and then come back in three years and pick it up and record the plat. And that's a nutshell version of that, but that's what that means.
Okay. Thank you.
And so my last comment concern, and I just want to make sure I understand regarding Brooklyn Road. I know the city engineer's comment regarding the narrow roadway width and the drop-off condition. Is it Washington County statement or that the applicant can do no improvements on that road, or if they were to add a little bit of asphalt while they're doing it? I just want to make sure that if there's any way to make it safer, a foot wider, you know, level off the drop-offs, because, you know, that's what we hear a lot.
My comments are based on the full road and where the traffic basically going and coming from. You're talking about a subdivision, say Middlebrook, 147 lots, you're talking about reserve another 40-some-odd lots, and that traffic is going to go down Brooklyn Road. Now, the conditions of Brooklyn Road may or may not be in good condition at certain points. But, you know, like, Middlebrook is doing some frontage improvement for site distance. They had to do that based on the county saying you didn't meet the site distance. You have to basically cut the road down at the intersection to meet that site distance requirement. With the reserve, they met the site distance requirement, the county basically said, great, you're done. No frontage improvement relative to site distance are required. My statement is not a condition. It's a recommendation, and I put it in there because we are adding a lot of trips to a road, county road, that is sort of substandard in many aspects, possibly in front of this area and possibly further down the road. I'm just stating that I don't feel comfortable just saying if you buy a house in this area that driving to it is your safe. For whatever reason, I look at that roadway and I say, the future of that roadway, we should be working towards upgrading that road for the amount of traffic that we are proposing to put on it. And that's all I'm stating, is so that people know that I have a concern about it and that it is something that we, as a community, Washington County, City of Sherwood, are going to have to deal with down the road.
So on page 33, your last sentence was, it is recommended that any minimum pavement, edeline, clog line be reestablished along the project, frontage along Brooklyn Road prior to granting occupancy, but that's not an official condition because we don't own Brooklyn Road, so...
The conditions come from the county on that.
So exhibit E, no, not E.
Just for... I'm really, for clarification for the record, we don't own the road, so we can't condition anything, and Washington County has jurisdiction over that authority.
Correct.
When they're doing their Robin Hood place, if they throw extra asphalt out there to keep the drop-off, you know...
Yes. So per conditions, actually, exhibit C, which is from Washington County, they basically said that they'll need public street connection to Brookman, they'll need to construct a minimum of 22 feet of pavement, and any improvements required for adequate intersection site distance, and closure, of course, of all the existing access points to Brookman. In addition to that, they're requiring a preliminary certification of adequate site distance. So that is what will be built at this time. And then in the interim, we're also requesting 125% of the fee in lieu for the ultimate improvement.
Okay. That is... That's where we're at. That's what...
Does my explanation sort of cover why I put, it's an engineer's comment, not a condition?
Right. But I take your comment seriously, and I wanted to make sure that...
That's why I put it in there, if I'm serious about this.
Right. And as a commission, we're not able to take any further action, but just for the record and anybody watching understands that this was a Washington County transportation decision, not a City of Sherwood ability to change Washington County, so...
I think it goes beyond that. I think the same condition was placed both on the Middlebrook subdivision, as a engineer's note in my comments, and on this one. It's just something that we need to look at in the future, and we are. We're working with the county. It's a tough nut to crack on this one.
Obviously. All right. Any other commissioners have any other questions or comments before we call for a question? Our motion? I don't see anybody adding to the chat. All right. So Vice Chair Kai, do you have the...
So, just so I'm sure, there's no additional conditions or anything else that we as a commission have added, right? It's just what is adopting within the staff report?
And as amended.
As amended by the staff is the staff report.
In the staff report. Okay. I move the Sherwood Planning Commission approve the application for... Remind me, Joy, is it sub 1902? Based on the applicant testimony, public testimony received, and the analysis findings and conditions in the staff report.
Second.
Just for clarification, that the, in the staff report as amended?
In... Correct. In the staff report as amended.
I still second it.
All right. So it was moved by...
Hey, Mark.
Commissioner Kai.
Hey.
Seconded by Commissioner Cottle. And we will take a roll call vote if there's no further... Is there any further discussion? Please put your name in the chat box. Seeing no request, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Kai?
Do I vote now, or do I just... No present?
What did I say? I meant roll call vote, so yes, we're going to vote.
Okay. I approve.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Holm?
Yes.
Commissioner Waidola?
Yes.
And Chair... Thank you very much. The motion has passed. All right. I would like to thank the applicant for taking the time again to go through this process with us as we practiced our first hearing with you. And again, thank you to the commissioners for a little bit of delay in putting up with this. Are there any other planning commissioner announcements before we adjourn? Just put your name in the meeting chat box. Staff have any final comments before we close the meeting?
Thank you, everyone, for, yeah, for your time and the opportunity to serve you in this manner. I think the future is here now, so...
Yeah. And special extra thanks, we have a couple of extra IT people in the back that made all this happen, so again, thank you to everybody. Hearing nothing else, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.